I'm asking you to please wrap up. And identify like a person in your group that will introduce the topic discussed and summarize it to everyone else. So I think you guys are ready, I just had this feeling. So let's start from the group led by Jeff and I will hand the microphone to you. Can you please introduce yourself?
Hi, my name is Emma. I'm from the University of Leeds studying a master's in exploration geophysics. Can you all hear me? Turn around the mic. So our discussions were what can academia do to basically prepare students for the industry? What challenges do we anticipate in the next 10 years? And how can academia handle them now? So these are our ideas. So the problems or the challenges that we think are going to come up are the continued rise of computing, which is ever more powerful. Big data, optimizing the connection between industry and academia, and like improving soft skills like communication and presenting your information, and environmental challenges, which are getting more and more important. So we talked about how academia can improve these. And we came up with, in terms of the continued rise of computing and really big data, like training people in programming from a younger age, from the beginning of their degree if they can, just having an integrated and structured training program so that people can understand and improve at that because it's obviously going to get more and more important as we get more and more data and computers get more powerful. And also just spreading awareness so that people know what they can do with programming and that sort of thing. Optimizing the connection between industry and academia is quite a difficult one to sort of get academics talking to in the industry and back. So we had an idea to have both active local and student chapters so that you can arrange meetups so that students can actually talk to industry professionals and vice versa. A mentoring program, which I know the EAG Women in Geoscience has, or they're just introducing, which sounds really good, where you can get a mentor in industry, or you can mentor someone who's at a lower level of student for you. If you're a master's student, you could mentor an undergraduate, that option. And also the bootcamp, which gives academics basically a chance to see the problems that people in industry experience firsthand. So it's all good, well and good thinking theoretically this will work, but actually getting hands on and learning what the problems are. That's an option. So the EAG obviously does that. Soft skills, like communication and presentation, I think these are really important because there's no point in being able to do something amazing if you can't tell anybody about it and you can't present it to the industry as a whole. So we thought you can do maybe actual formal training in presenting at university, or just a bit more sort of active learning. We talked about a flipped classroom, which is like where you can, you read over the material and then discuss it rather than just sitting in a lecture and taking it in, which is just basically any opportunity where you have to present your ideas and you have to talk to people. It's just good for improving communication skills and formal, yeah. Formal training would also be great. We had the idea of a young person's e-lecture on how to present, just, you know, showing people just the basic skills because it's not that difficult, but a lot of people don't know and you just have to give people the information. So maybe a sort of lecture series on that would be good. And finally, the environment... Huh? Thank you very much! I've had some formal training! Yeah, exactly. It was my idea. It really does help. I wasn't very good at public speaking, still not, but it just helps to just do it. So it's good. And finally, environmental challenges. Basically, you know, obviously the environment's very important, it's going to get more and more important, and we need to be able to handle the questions that people are going to ask, solve the problems, encourage transparency so that we can sort of look at these problems together and hopefully work out a solution. Is that everything? Thank you!
Thank you very much. We'll move to this table. Let's do this. Or to that one. Let's stay there, I see you guys are ready. Yeah, well, can I do it now? Yeah, we can do it now. Open suggestion. Yeah, they forget about it. Exactly.
One thing that came up on our table and also at yours is sort of this link between academia and industry. I just mentioned it at this table. I have never had a student coming to me saying, "I'm thinking of going to do this research. What do you, Mr. Industry, think?" Never. And I go to loads of universities all the time, I talk to everybody, and nobody has ever come to me and say, "What do you think? Is this a good idea?" I've gone to them sometimes and say, "What are you doing?", and give maybe a little bit of advice and, you know, a nudge here and there, but nobody... So maybe, you know, maybe the stuff that you suggested is a good idea. But generally speaking, I think you students, you know, be a bit more ballsy, you know, and go out there. Because, you know, doing, I've just been on a tour giving this honorary lecture to 25 universities, and there is also some pretty crappy research going on, stuff that really is not very germane to what we do in the oil industry, you know? And now, okay, sometimes you need blue sky thinking, don't get me wrong, but there was some really very isoteric things going on. And I think you guys, you know, what's the point of doing research that's not going to make an impact any time, you know, over the next 100 years? It's a bit pointless. So, yeah, have it checked out against the industry and just go for it. But yeah, of course, also use the EAG, and I mean, all these suggestions you make are good, but, you know, have the balls to do that.
Anyone want to follow up on this? Comments or also on the outcome of this group? Yes?
Yeah, so maybe I have a question. You mentioned there the importance of programming, the flow towards big data and incorporating that also in the academic curriculum. I was attending a workshop on Monday, very interesting, open source software. Well, those developments are continuing. And there actually the points were raised, like, we want to spend less on programming for the geophysical students since they're not being raised as a computer scientist. They are actually spending a lot of time developing those codes before they can do actually their own research. So what is your view on that, on that table?
I know the guy who did your talk. I went, I was at the hackathon, which was run by Matt Hall. He was there, one of the people. But I think being able to program is really helpful whenever you're doing any kind of science. Obviously, there are computer programmers, but, sorry, computer scientists who can do these big programs like petroleum and stuff like that. But when it comes down to a small problem that you've got, if you're doing something very repetitive, if you've got a knowledge of programming, then you can think, "How can I optimize this? How can I make this better and less pointless work for myself?". I think being able to do that is really useful.
How does this work with big data?
Big data, obviously, that's a different area. But I mean, if, yeah, I mean, big data, the computer scientists are probably the ones who need to handle that. But we need to be able to sort of deal with that within the programs. But I think just, it's just a useful skill whenever you're going to have to do something like that. Yeah, yeah. I don't know.
My take on it is that right now there's a major step change once you go from undergraduate to graduate education, that you spend the first couple of years getting up to speed on how to program, if that's where your particular research is evolving. And I think having a structured program that right from your first, you know, it's a gradual change such that when you get into your, start your research, that you're much more ready and you cut out a lot of the six months to 12 months of that extra work and getting up to speed. And I think it's also good to recognize that not everyone has to be, you know, the most high-end, you know, GPU programmer. That's, you know, not everyone's going to work on a big data problem, but even if it's just a basic Python scripting or something like that, that helps you within, you know, 20 minutes be able to solve a problem that to do something manually over and over again would take you, you know, days and days. I think that's one of the key challenges and one of the ways that we can improve.
Hello, I'm Carlos from Brazil. And about the programming, I think that programming is fundamental. And as geoscientists or engineers, for example, petrol engineers, we don't need to be experts in programming, but we need to know basic programming because at least I see that doing small programs is the best way to see ideas working. So you can get out, can put the books beside a little bit and see this, how real stuff works. Maybe not the best program. And the second part of my answer is integration. I think that we don't have to wait to be in a big company or an oil company to work with petrophysicists, reservoir engineers. We, I think that we need to integrate people since they're graduate or undergrad course. For example, I'm as a petrol engineer doing some research assistant, some research with a computer engineer and so on. So we need to integrate people earlier. For example, if I did a small program, very simple, I can turn to my friend and, "Oh, here is our project. How do you see my program? Give me some tips." That's informal training. We need, informal training is important too. And integrating people is a way of learning in an informal way. Okay, thanks.
One last question and we switch to the next.
So I completely agree with what you said there. And we had a discussion here about basically that the set of problems that we're trying to solve are becoming more and more complex, and also the solutions towards those, right? If you look at the progression in things like migration or demultipled or regularization, every time, you know, we go to higher dimension, mentionalities, more data inclusion and so forth. So, you know, it is already a big task from a scientific point of view. And to me, computing is like, you know, with MATLAB, with Octave, those kind of tools, they are so simple to use, right? And it's easy to prove the concept. But, you know, to actually aim for a C++ program that it can be optimized and is ready for production, I don't think that is necessarily what people should be focusing on. It's more the tools. And also in light of what you said there, you know, the integration is yet another level of complexity that we see happening, right? So for students to actually do all that stuff, right, in a bachelor and then in a master and then perhaps a PhD, it is a tremendous amount of work. So use the tools, but we have to become more broader skilled. That's what you see. So huge challenges, but also huge opportunities, I think.
So we were discussing the question whether we face a kind of a generation gap in our daily working lives and how our attitudes versus life and work, whether they changed or not. And we came kind of to conclusion that, well, first, that mainly the attitudes towards work, like to be successful and to work properly and to be eager to advance, did not change. But for sure, the priorities, like for today, with like both partners of a couple working and with going back to the job after having a child faster, all these priorities make it necessary to have a more flexible workspace, to have the possibility to work remotely from home, to, I don't know, take a day off during a week and work longer on other days. So this is definitely a model young people would need to balance life and work properly. It was also interesting to see that there definitely is a huge difference between like smaller consulting companies and the big oil companies, and also even within those big companies, if you go to a smaller, like, branch office, for example. Because if, as soon as you work in a smaller office, there are only a few people to ask. And we heard it's just when you're in a small consultancy office, there is just one or two people at the top and you can directly go to this person, get a definite yes or no as an answer, whereas in large companies, there are so many steps in between, a lot of maybes and what ifs. So it definitely helps to get a clear answer to your problem. Also that in, at the same time, in smaller companies, you feel the pressure more immediately because if you're like a service company, you have to do what your, what your customer wants, and they want it fast and immediately, and especially these days with the cost cuttings, you have to do it as cheap and as efficient as possible. And what I really liked, what I heard here is that you're told to make it right the first time so you don't have the time to try, which is a bit easier in a larger company because you're at some point kind of redundant, there are other people who could help you. But in total, I would say that these kind of challenging, challenging days with downsizing of companies is also kind of a chance for our, for our generation because we are at some points more efficient and faster using new technologies and applying all the tools we learn at university so that we maybe are, can stand the pressure a bit longer and come to a faster outcome and in the end show our individual commitment and make a name for ourselves and then continue. Also, we were briefly discussing kind of an outlook into the future because what, we had one comment here saying that the generations to come seem to be, at least at the moment, maybe a bit distracted by all those modern technologies. If you look at school kids, they're always just with their smartphones and maybe not, I mean, we don't know. But so for the future, if there really is a chance that people get distracted from what is really important, we should make sure that we don't lose the contact to all those experienced people who still show us what is important, what matters, how to do these things right, and to combine this with our new technologies to make everything right and in an efficient way. Thanks.
Before we start the question, I hand the microphone to former EAG Vice President Filippo Ros. He has some announcement we get at young professional related events.
Yeah, thanks, Filippo. Yes, last year's EAG president, now trying to put some of it into practice. I work in Stadl in Norway. And one of the things we're trying to do, very nice to see everybody here, because we wanted to make a better program for young professionals. So you've seen these things on your tables. There's a geophysical bootcamp and a geological bootcamp, which you can still apply for. So just to remind you, these are events that will happen, the geological bootcamp later this year and the next geophysical bootcamp in the spring. If you have a chance, I'd like to go, please apply. And if you're a geophysicist, you might like to go on the geological bootcamp. If you're a reservoir engineer, you might like to go on the geophysical bootcamp. So don't just think in your own box, okay? So think about those. But the main thing I wanted to tell you about was the new initiative we have, which is called the Quantitative, the Young Professional School in Quantitative Geoscience. And bootcamps are focused on master's students who are like wanting to understand their subject in industry. This is taking you a step further. This is really aimed at either PhD post-grad type students or actually professionals that are in the industry that want to move up another step. And we've got a more kind of high level. Where is the science at now? It'll cover geoscience, petrophysics, geophysics and reservoir simulation. The first school is planned in Wales in October of this year, in a beautiful location by the beach with lots of rocks to look at. And then there may be future schools. We do have a challenge because the funding of the Young Professional School depends on sponsorship of companies to sponsor young professionals. And to be frank, in this year, that has been really tough for us. So if you are a young professional in industry, you might persuade your company to sponsor you on this, that would be really great. But even if you can't do that, please apply because it'll be competitive to come on this school. You have to apply to have a chance of going. So please apply. If we don't manage to get enough sponsorship, we may have to postpone this particular school from October to next year, but we'll make that decision over the early part of the summer. But the first thing is make sure that you're on the course whenever it happens. And we have applicants already, so please sign up.
Thank you very much, Filippo. Any comments, remarks on Linda's summary? Anyone? Yep.
Yeah, so I indeed agree that flexibility and work, work-life balance and balancing that continuously is a very dynamic process at the moment. That holds for industry, of course, that also holds for academia, right? So the tendency for academics is that you're being kicked around, especially after your PhD for, oh, you saw it in Jeff's talk, he has been all over the world in like only a few years, I guess. So that's also not always as optimal for your private life as it, as you would like it to be. So I think, well, we as the young professionals should also try to address those issues and maybe also for academia where people keep on endlessly being considered in small term, well, contracts of only a few years and then you need to head out again. So I think that's a difficult issue and which was different in the past, I guess.
Any other comments? I'll move on to the next table. Led by Max, so please.
Hi, my name is Aider. I just graduated from Colorado School of Mines with a PhD. And we didn't have a specific question, so we talked about different subjects. But one of the things we talked about is what, what are the characteristics that young professionals should have to strive in, in the energy industry? And we said that we need to be curious and look for new projects and, yeah, ask for new projects and be curious. Like, I guess you're in your life, be the same in, at work. And then besides, so you, we also said that you need to be good at what you do and at your expertise, but besides that, you also need to know more about global economics or geopolitics and, and more general things, right? Not only, I'm a geologist, so not only know about your own reservoir and pure geology, I guess you need to broaden that knowledge. And then, so we also talked about maybe specialization in other things and timing that with your career or within the career. So for instance, doing an MBA and when should be a good time to do that? Maybe not at the beginning of your career, but maybe later or that could be a possibility. And, yeah, and I don't know what else we, we said. If I'm missing something, you guys can tell me. And then we also switched topics and we talked about how we think or what's the feeling about unconventionals in, in Europe. And we said that it's, it's going to be a challenge, if not very complicated. And, yeah, we were talking about that, right? I think. Thank you.
Have any comments on this? Questions? Yes? Good, not perfect.
Is it just your view of unconventionals in Europe?
Yeah. What does big oil think about unconventionals in Europe?
Unconventionals, let me start a little bit more general and then I'll try to answer your question as well. Unconventionals, I see as part of the energy solution. We need to have the traditional oil and gas as we, as we know it, from the old shore, from the shallow water, the deep water, oil and gas coming in. Unconventionals provide a specific kind of niche area, relatively new, very successful in the US. And next to it, of course, the other types of energy, the renewable energies as we see them coming up.
But clearly for all types of energy, the goods might be in the ground, but you need to be able to bring them out economically as well as in an acceptable way for the local communities. And clearly on the latter part, that's where we see that there's a lot of local resistance in many countries in northwest Europe or maybe, maybe all of Europe. And if that support is not there, well, then even with the best technologies, but if people do not want you to do it, you might not be able to convince them. Even if the technologies are safe and sound and economically viable, if there's a perception out there that they do not want it, you struggle. You see that in many different types of energies as well, the same with windmills, which maybe from a concept idea supported by many, but if they are placed in the backyard, you start seeing, well, actually, I'm not too sure if I support it. So...
In the States, it's the farmers who own the mineral rights. So they say, "Come hither, drill here and give me a stake of the money", whereas in Europe, it doesn't. And then they say, "Get out of my land". And that whole psychological and legal difference is just humongous. I mean, in the UK, I think we've built now four or five unconventional wells in eight years with enormous long legal processes, whereas in the Eagle Ford, well, certainly in the high times, they drilled something like 2,500 wells continuously. I mean, it's a totally different ballgame. So it'll be very interesting to see how that plays out. But I think unconventional in Europe is going to take a long time to get going. That's at least what I think.
Yes?
I'd just really like to ask, add, like, from an Austrian perspective, we also had this discussion, like, was it two years ago, I think, for the last time, when OMV wanted to do some first, like, studies and see how it works, if it works, and where the population really was totally against everything. And which, which goes hand in hand with the, with the laws we have here, where the state owns all the oil and the gas, which I really have to save in working for an oil company, I think, in total for like the environment and the country itself. I think it's better like that than anybody taking its own decision, okay, you can drill here, you can do whatever you want. Because, I mean, what we see from US is that you can also do a lot of things wrong, that you, if there is no regulating force making sure that you don't pollute groundwaterers, that you don't just mess up the whole environment. That's what partly happens, right? So you, if, if it's not your own decision, just mostly just because of money, you ensure at least that it's done in the right way and in a resourceful way, I would say. I mean, I'm absolutely sure that as soon as we run out of like conventional oil and gas, we will do that, but make sure to do it right, I guess.
Thank you, Linda. Let's move on to the last table and, and, oh, yes, she is.
Okay, so our discussion centered around the theme of innovation and we discussed various aspects related to that. First of all, what you would innovate, how do you figure out how to develop those innovations? And the first thing you have to consider is what impact that's going to have. Like we alluded to earlier, we said research for research sake is all well and good, but if it's going to have no application in industry, then really why are you researching it? So you have to figure out what impact your research is going to have. Find a general consensus on what is useful by consulting industry or other organizations that might use your new innovative techniques or methods. And again, this comes back to the link between academia and industry and how students and young people are being trained. And there's different things, different types of innovation. You could say you can develop existing methods or find a new way of integrating different data sets, or just find a whole new way to deal with the data that you're given. So different types of innovation can come from that. And then how do you go about, if you've got this idea of this innovation that you want to implement, how you go about that? And we were talking about how in industry, it's sort of a balance between the big companies coming up with an idea, they develop it themselves and then they want to productize it by giving it to their service companies. But actually, in the service companies, they really need to drive that innovation to keep relevant and keep their services relevant to the industry. So they're often coming up with their own innovations and then pitching these and selling these to the companies. So you need these non-technical competences as well, the ability to communicate and to sell your idea or your innovation that you've come up with to convince other people that that's worth the time and effort of going into. And we also said, yeah, so the sell it before you do it, so you have to take the lead, you have your idea, you approach a company or an organization and you say, "I've got..." and you say, I've got my idea, I want to develop it. You pitch it, have a template of your report before you even start your research, we said could be quite helpful. So you already know what you want to achieve and you can let that guide your research. And in the end, after your research, most people produce a report or a paper. But again, how does a company or an organization use that? It really needs to become a product before it can be properly implemented into any kind of industry methods. So productizing your research is also important. Yeah, I think that's the gist of what we discussed. And then we were also talking about how there's nothing we can do about the oil price. We just have to suck it up, so to speak. But we really can drive the innovation forward in terms of becoming more efficient and having better methods which make our work more accurate. So that's really what we can do to drive the industry forward during difficult times such as these. Yeah.
Yes.
All right, maybe from a more academic perspective. In the 1860s, James Clerk Maxwell, one of the fathers of electromagnetism, was told that his equations were nothing but a mathematical construct. There was no practical use for it. And of course, now almost everything we do that we use in our pockets is fundamentally linked to the laws that he postulated and put together a mathematical framework. You also look at quantum mechanics and lasers and things of the time which were ahead of the curve, that there was no immediate application. So I would say that, in my opinion, what's important is having a portfolio of innovation. Where you, sure, you probably weighted heavily to what's going to be important now in the next couple of years, but to not forget that the long tail is actually what can be the drivers of disruptive change. So I think that's my comment for that.
Thank you, Jeff. Any?
And then when the first computer was made, the guy famously said, that's never gonna go anywhere. Now, you know, how many computers are there out there? So it's quite hilarious that people sometimes can get totally blind to an opportunity. Yeah, so it's quite funny. Yeah, you do need blue-sky research, but there is also useless research. And you need to be able, you have to have the knack to find out what is, you know, let's say, research into elastic wave形inversion or stuff like that. You know, you feel that, you know, if we can crack this, it's gonna make a big impact. But there are also some research going on where I sometimes think, you know, why do we actually bother? Maybe I'm just a ludite, but there you go.
Yep.
You didn't talk about better to be a specialist than generalist, yeah? Is that your idea? So to what extent you agree on this? Because I know many scientists that they are generalists, not the specialists.
I mean, yeah, I think we didn't say that there was no opportunities for generalists in the industry, more that to be the best in your field, you can never be the best at everything. So, I mean, I think what that point was trying to say was that it's better to be a specialist and go further in that field than if you just get stuck at a generalist level. But, you know, I guess there are opportunities there as well. I think you'll probably have more to say on it than me.
Well, what we discussed is that, you know, you do need to know, you need to know a fair bit about, let's say, the whole subsurface. I mean, for instance, I know nothing about refining. Should I? I don't think so. You know, so I don't, I'm not that general that I know about refining. So, but I do know a fair bit about subsurface and flow simulation, seismic processing and all that sort of stuff. But let me tell you, you know, I know of sort of mineral management guys in industry that are, you know, they know a bit about this, a bit about this, a bit about this and all that sort of stuff. They're the first that get fired. In the end of the day, I think you need to know a fair amount about a lot, but in one area, you need to be the best you can be. And then that's got, you know, if, oh, you wanna know about this, you gotta go to John or, you know, or Maria, whatever it is. So it's a balancing act. You know, only being a total geek that doesn't know what comes into his field and what, how, the results of what he makes get used is also useless. But, you know, you do need to know something. You need to have one area where you know a lot. Look at Jeff, he's a smart guy. He knows a lot about, he knows a lot about subsurface stuff, but he knows what his specialty is, high-performance computing in geophysics. So he's specialized. And I think specialization is very important, but it shouldn't come at the exclusion of integration. And it is, it's a balancing act. It's not one or the other, it's a bit of both. Is that right, Max?
I think it's time to wrap up this. We went past time, which is excellent. That's, that's not my job. Well, it depends, you know. Yeah, so first of all, thanks everyone for attending. This has been terrific. We please, one more round of applause for the speakers. I did enjoy it. Also, hopefully you all enjoyed this brainstorming format. I think it's been successful. I just have a few closing remarks. So if you, during the day, you can log on still on the Sandstep website. There is a survey that you can fill up during the day while you're in the conference. And then I'll follow up on the LinkedIn also with a Google questionnaire to ask you some additional questions. How did we do and, you know, and so on. We have two smaller additional events that I want to just advertise. So there is a meet and greet, two meet and greets event at the EAG Pavilion, so inside Exhibition Area. For the one for the Women in Geoscience is actually going on right now. So if you're not too hungry and you wanna stop by the EAG Pavilion to get to meet the committee members of the Women in Geoscience group. And then there will be at 4:00 PM today, also the EAG Pavilion, a meet and greet with the Young Professional Committee Member, which is gonna be me and hopefully Niels. So if you have any additional questions or whatever, please come by and stop. Stop by and come by and stop, whatever, I'm sure in which order. So thanks again for your participation. I hope I didn't miss, good, very good. Yeah, that's, we actually, we briefly discussed like the last question. So what do you see yourself in three years? I guess, you know, we have a clear winner, which is the industry. You know, we in our academia, I don't know if it's, you know, for the good, you know, for the current oil prices, whatever, has a good 30%, which please, you know, it's, you know, lots of people, I think, consider as a backup, which I think that's the very wrong way to look at it. You should see academia as, you know, which is, can be PhD, postdoc, whatever, professor. It's only a way to upgrade your knowledge. And often, you know, also what in academia, you should keep networking, especially with people in industry, not just to get some money to do the research, but as Michelle suggested before, as a reality check on your research. So, you know, and I've been lucky enough to did my PhD with a good consortium meeting. And then it was great, it was the best, one of the best time of the year to meet all these people and discuss your research, which is always highly appreciated because, you know, they could see what you were doing, could sit with you and, you know, discuss. You always, you know, you would leave with great tips for your research. So thanks again for coming. You're all free to leave and go for lunch and then hope to see you around or at the meet and greet this afternoon and hopefully next year in Paris. Thank you.